This is the regular weekly meeting of the Mobile City Council for Wednesday, July 5th, 2017. Please stand as Reverend Leroy Lampkins, Berean Baptist Church, leads us in invocation and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning and greetings. I pray that everyone had a wonderful Fourth of July. Let us pray. Gracious and merciful Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve the citizens of Mobile. Father, we just ask that you would give these, the elected officials, Father, those that you've put in place, the wisdom and discernment, to conduct the business of the people, Father, in a fair and equitable way, Father. That justice be done, that truth be honored. Father, we ask for your wisdom and your discernment. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. President Gregory. Here. Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of Rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Glad to see you here. Hope you all had a great holiday day off. Many of you took the entire weekend. The weather was great, so good to have everybody back here. We had a wonderful fireworks display at Cooper Riverside Park. I know a lot of people were also at Hank Aaron Stadium. John Williams tells us the stadium was packed, so a lot of celebrations going on in our city, as always, to celebrate our country's independence. So, thank you all for coming this morning. Our rules of the council are very simple. We just ask everyone to please turn off all of your electronic devices. If you come to the podium to speak, please give us your name and address for the record. If you have any questions or concerns, please address those to me. I am the chair, and I'll ask the appropriate member of the administration or council to try to address those concerns at that time. You will have five minutes. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and that's your indication to go ahead and begin wrapping up your statements. Again, thank you all for coming this morning. It's good to see you here, and we look forward to hearing from some of you coming up shortly. All right. Ms. Merchant.
Approval of minutes of the meeting of June the 27th. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Well, good morning. Since we couldn't wish you a happy Fourth of July, we'll wish you a happy Fifth of July. Delighted to see you here this morning. The first thing on my agenda this morning is recognition of Firefighter of the Month of May for Captain Samuel Adams, and I would ask Chief Sealy and Captain Adams to please approach the podium and face the city council. You know, by way of background, Captain Adams has really been a public servant all of his career. Started off a couple of years with the Sheriff's Department, then became a firefighter in Pensacola for approximately eight years before joining the Mobile Fire Rescue Department. Now, in the last eight to 10 years, he's been assigned to the Bureau of Fire Prevention, and the Bureau of Fire Prevention assures that all of our buildings are in code, so he visits various facilities and makes sure that they're in code. And so, it's part of that responsibility of checking out the grounds during the spring fling to make sure that everything was within code during that event, that he's recognized for being the officer, excuse me, the Firefighter of the Month. And the proclamation reads, "While in the course of code enforcement duties at the grounds, Captain Samuel Adams was approached by Mobile Police Department officer who alerted him to an individual who needed medical attention. He quickly realized that there were many heat-related calls, including seizures and strokes, that could occur throughout the day. He set up incident command, assessed patients, and coordinated additional rescue units." Now, this is someone who does code enforcement, and first responsibility is not as a paramedic. There would be a total of 15 medical-related incidents that occurred, not to mention the code violations he managed, but Captain Adams remained professional throughout the day. His dedication and flexibility and the performance of his duties is an asset for all Mobiians. Now therefore, on behalf of all Mobiians, with our sincerest thanks, we are pleased to award the certificate of recognition to him as Firefighter of the Month. Congratulations, Captain.
Well, we are happy to have you here in Mobile rather than over in Pensacola, so...
A side story to that is that, as many of you know, Chief Barber and I, prior to him being the Public Safety Director, we used to walk neighborhoods. So, Chief Barber and I walked in the neighborhoods one day, and so we knocked on the door, and this lady comes door, and we visit with her for a few minutes, and then about the time we're getting ready to leave, she mentions that her husband works for Mobile Fire Rescue. And about that time, he pulls into the driveway, and he confessed, lady's thinking, "Oh, my gosh, what did I do wrong?" He did nothing wrong. We just happened to knock on his door that day.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
From my perspective, the Independence Day celebration in Mobile was over the top. My understanding is that the Bay Bear Stadium was completely full during the game, had a great fireworks display afterwards. I joined with the group that was at Cooper Riverside Park. We were entertained by the Pops Band, or Pops Orchestra, which did a magnificent job, and followed by outstanding, spectacular fireworks display. During the event, prior to the fireworks, I had an opportunity to speak briefly to the crowd and decided that I would just solicit their opinion on whether they liked it at Battleship Park, or did they like it at Cooper Riverside Park, because we'd had to move it because of concerns about the parking and being mired down in parking. Anyway, what was a resounding response is that people liked it at Cooper Riverside Park, which I think is great, because it's an indication that our citizens want to go to the river. We've got to figure out the programming, the increased programming of events to drive our citizens, to give them the opportunity to go to the river and see the great things that are going on down there. So, great Fourth of July, and the heading of biker-friendly. Tomorrow, we'll be joining the members of the city council along with members of the biking community to unveil the first of our new bicycle safety signs. To be a family-friendly city, we need to be a bicycle-friendly city. It's important that our citizens feel safe biking across the city of Mobile. Whether it's creating a safer, more bikeable water street, or connecting downtown Mobile with Three Mile Creek Trail, making Mobile biker-friendly will connect our neighborhoods and businesses and move us forward on a path to becoming one Mobile. Tomorrow, we will be unveiling, as I said, the first safety sign that'll be placed in conjunction with a bike trail. Also, on Friday, we'll join our Youth Empowered for Success, our Yes Initiative. We'll be joining our interns to announce the latest community partners who have answered the city's call to become a Yes Zone. And those are places and spaces that will ensure young people have access to a space where they can learn, grow, and thrive. That's Friday, this coming Friday, at 9:00 a.m. at Seals Community Center. Anyone interested in being there? We look forward to seeing you. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Merchant.
Monthly Finance Report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I feel like a broken record. I will report to you once again that the city's revenues are not where they need to be, but the city's expenditures are where they do need to be. A little bit of good news, more recently, while our sales taxes have been falling as compared to budget, we actually have improved somewhat in that our same-period sales taxes are up over the recent past, as opposed to where they were the first of the year when we fell behind both budget and 2016 totals. We're about 4.5 percent down for the year in sales taxes, and down about 2.5 percent in revenues from all sources through the year. We're down also, which is the right direction, in expenditures by about $9 million through the year so far, which is about 10 and 1/2 percent under budget in all departments. We're actually under budget a little bit more than that if you include non-departmental, but those figures can vary wildly throughout the year, so we really look at departmental expenditures as a sign of budgetary control. So I think we're where we need to be. We're on net slightly ahead of schedule, looking at the budget overall. Something interesting happened a couple of weeks ago that I wanted to mention to you. You probably saw that Amazon had published their notice of intent to acquire Whole Foods. Under what we believe the law to be, if Amazon pursues a joint marketing plan with Whole Foods, which they have said they will do, that is, Amazon will be able to use Whole Foods locations to conduct some of their sales activities, and they'll have some joint marketing, then Amazon will no longer be eligible to be a simplified seller-use taxpayer, and they would drop out of that category that allows them to actually pay 8 percent sales taxes, 2 percent of which comes to the municipalities, as opposed to the 5 percent that we collect on brick-and-mortar sales. And it'll be all of their online sales, not just the ones conducted in the city of Mobile. We don't know what percentage of sales Amazon has, because the state won't report it to us, but we believe it's huge. So many people now are just completely Amazon buyers. So, once that does occur, if Amazon is successful, I think we'll see somewhat of an improvement in our sales tax receipts. And I look forward to seeing those of you who can attend the Citizens Finance Committee meeting today. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions of Mr. West?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dave.
Paul, going back to the revenue numbers, year-to-date revenues from all sources versus prior year-to-date, what's that comparison? I just want to make sure I understood that. Because you said they were down, but I wasn't sure whether you meant they were down versus last year, or down versus budget.
They are not down versus last year. I do not have that total here, but we would have predicted a 3 percent change, and we had a 2.5 percent change.
So maybe 0.5 percent increase over the last year, something like that.
That's right.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Mrs. Rich?
I was wondering, has the administration thought about, since you brought up taxing air and B, what is it? Air and B?
Air B and B.
B and B. Yeah. B and B.
They are liable for the payment of taxes. And so, where we can find them, and they're not always easy to find, our audit division will audit and tax. They are not exempt from tax. That is a common misconception.
Right. So it's not like we have to write something like we did with Uber?
That is correct.
Okay. Because there is a website that tracks the number of parcels in your community, and we were listed as having 91. I don't know if they're all active all the time, but apparently they register, so there is some filtering that you can do. And I think it's only fair, especially because we're in the convention industry and we market so much with public dollars in our facility, and it's almost like having a small kind of boutiquey hotel that is going about its business untaxed.
I'll put an eye on that and find out exactly what our audit activity has been. Our audit department is extremely creative in how they find taxpayers who attempt to avoid sales taxes or lodging taxes and be in...
I know a lot of cities are struggling with this particular industry of going under the radar, so it's good.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? As Mr. West mentioned, we do have a Citizens Budget and Finance Committee meeting coordinating with our Finance Committee of the Council. That meeting will be at 2:00 on the ninth floor of the Council's conference room, so everyone is invited. 2:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. On today's agenda is a request for waiver of the noise ordinance on St. Stevens Road on July 29th, on Alba Street on July 22nd, and on Parkway Drive on July the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today's the public hearing to consider the application of Derek Tucker, Doing Businesses Derek Taxi and Transportation, for a taxi sedan service.
All right. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this, please come to the Anyone on this? All right. Public hearing is over.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Scott Flanagan.
Mr. Flanagan.
Good morning.
My name is Scott Flanagan. I am the news director at Fox 10, 1501 Satchel Page. To begin, I want to thank the Honorable Members of the Council for allowing me to speak today. At Fox 10, we appreciate your service and your attention to transparency, good governance, and the public interest. We also value professionalism in service to fine men and women who wear the uniform as law enforcement and first responders. I do not take lightly that yesterday was the Fourth of July, and I am honored to speak with you today about freedom in government by the people and for the people. Our focus on public service in our democracy is what brings me before you today. Since September, Fox 10 has been attempting to engage with the city of Mobile and body cam video to inform Mobile's taxpayers and citizens of the work of their public officials. Unfortunately, our efforts have been mostly rebuffed. Late last year, we were told that an attorney general opinion would be requested regarding body camera video. We prepared this letter providing legal and factual background specifically on body camera video of the incident after the McGill-Murphy High School football game. I do have copies of the letter for each of you, and ask that it be entered into the records and shared with the Attorney General should a request for opinion be made. We are pleased that the issue of the public's access to body camera video has come before the council, albeit belatedly, but we are concerned that the resolution does not adequately address the situation at hand. First, the resolution's focus on minors appearing in the video is misplaced. The incident in question happened in public, where any member of the public could have seen it. There is no special protected right of privacy for minors in that situation. The city has released video from other sources that include minors in at least two recent high-profile events in relation to a carjacking in Midtown Mobile and the shooting at the Winsong Movie Theater. In any event, when we received the McGill versus Murphy video, it is our intention to blur minors. Secondly, we are confused by the resolution's reference to an open investigation, as Public Safety Director Barber already apologized to the public for the incident. If it's still an ongoing investigation or an open investigation, we would like to know when it would be complete. We fear it could be labeled as an open investigation forever. Finally, we offer two additional questions that we believe better clarify the scope of the situation here in Mobile. The first question, must body camera video taken in a public place without any expectations of privacy be released under the Open Records Act? The second question, if law enforcement has apologized to the public for an incident, can the incident still be considered under investigation, and how long can law enforcement reasonably keep an incident under investigation under the Open Records Act? We believe that the two additions, we believe that the additions of these two questions would provide greater context and scope for the Attorney General. We appreciate your consideration of them. On behalf of the journalists at Fox 10 News and the citizens of Mobile, thank you for your time and your commitment to transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan, for coming down. We rarely hear from members of the media coming down to speak to us at the podium, so this may be a first.
I do have copies of the letter that was, I would like to enter that into the record, please.
You'll give them to Ms. Merchant.
It's a copy for each council member.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Velma Dell Jackson. Thrash?
She's coming.
Oh, she's coming? Okay, Ms. Jackson's coming.
Good morning.
Velma Dell Jackson, 1552 J. Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36605. I come in the name of Jesus, as always. I just had a question about, I don't feel comfortable standing here telling everybody where I live. I was just wondering, what was the purpose of giving out addresses when we speak to the council? I just wanted to mention that, but I'm really here in support of our police officers. I don't think I can call one of you at 12:00 at night to come and protect us from an intruder. There is an attack of the enemy against our security in this nation. Sure, there are bad officers, and there will always be some bad officers, but there are so many good officers who are just trying to do their jobs and earn a living for their families. So I would like to suggest to our police chief that after they had issued body cameras to all of their officers and made sure that they know how to use them properly, that they also issue one to our commissioners, our mayor, our lawyers, our finance officer, and make sure that they know how to use them correctly while conducting the business of their jobs. Nobody can do a good job while they are being watched constantly, suggesting they can't be trusted to do their jobs. And I say it again, our police officers are not the cause of the violence among our children. This hip-hop and rap that we are presenting to our children is not music. It is the fuel behind all this violence. They say some of it is clean, and they even call some of it gospel, but it is all the same beat, that destructive beat that is destroying our children's sense of decency. And it's not about color. It's destroying all our children. Now, when God sent Moses to speak to Pharaoh, what God was saying was, "That's enough."
Ms. Jackson, let me interrupt you, if you don't mind, very quickly. When you signed in to speak on Thursday, we appreciate you doing it ahead of time, by the way, you had some specific items that you were going to address, and we are trying our best to hold everybody's feet to the fire on addressing those specific issues. I think you wanted to speak about rules, council rules, body cams, and youth violence. So, if you would stick to those, we'd appreciate it.
Okay. I did that right.
Well, you were somewhere in the category, sort of.
All right. Can I say something else about that?
We were giving you a little bit of flexibility, so if you would just please.
Okay. I had the rules of the council, right. Can I say one other thing about the rules of the council? You said when we sign up to speak, they used to run and tell me, "I can't speak." The Constitution guarantees the freedom of speech only second to religion. Now, our forefathers thought that religion and freedom of speech was the two most important speeds, I mean, most important freedoms. Now, isn't, you just think about, we do not have the freedom to speak about religion. Just think about that. When you have, when you conduct this, and when you're controlling people's speech, think about, why did our forefathers put freedom of speech and freedom of religion as the two most important things about our religion? And that is what the enemy is, I mean, about our freedom, and that is what our enemy is attacking. So you have the authority, so you think about that. So, God is talking to us now, and he's saying, "That's enough. That's enough. That's enough." And today is Wednesday.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Merchant.
Velma Thrash.
Yeah, I don't think she's here.
Resolutions held over? Resolution 21390, authorize contract with M. Gay Constructors for Harmon Park Ballfield Lighting Improvements.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21392, authorize contract with Simplex Grenell for Mobile Cruise Terminal Backflow Preventer Installation. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21393, authorize contract with Mobile Asphalt Company for 2016 Pago County Commission, District 1 and 3.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Manzi.
I just want to publicly thank the continued partnership with County Commission, particularly our County Commissioner, the Honorable Messia Lutgood, and working with us on this particular project, and I'm hopeful that this relationship will produce even more resources for resurfacing and street rebuilding in her County Commission District and City Council District 2.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
31394, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive funding from the DOJ Fiscal Year 17 COPS Hiring Program. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 03414 through 60404.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for me to consideration of Resolution 03414 through 60404.
So moved. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03414, appoint Paige Miller and Denise Moffett to the Mobile City-County Youth Council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
27398, give notice of municipal election to be held on August 22nd, 2017, for mayor and city council. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
31399, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive funding from the 2017 N.R.P.A. Walmart Healthy Out of School Time Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
31400, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive funding from the First Responders' Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
31401, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive funding from the Play Spaces Grant for $50,000.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37402, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premise, and only license for Si Theodor Exxon.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
58403, authorize removal of weeds, Group 1562.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
60404, authorize the mayor to seek an opinion from the Alabama Attorney General regarding producing body camera footage of an incident involving a minor and disclosure of internal police body camera footage policies.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21405 and 21406.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for me to consideration of Resolution 21405 and 21406.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21405, authorize contract with American Tennis Courts for Copeland Cox Tennis Center play, player Shay Cabanas.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21406, authorize contract with Christian Prius Landscape Architectural to develop a master plan for Joe Bailey Park.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
This is the first step in the revitalization of Joe Bailey...
This is the first step in the revitalization of Joe Bailey Park, which is a park just off of Magnolia Avenue in District 5. In the fall of last year, I had a charrette in which I invited neighborhoods around the park to come and discuss the future of the park with me and other concerned citizens. We took the input that we received during that meeting and will be giving it to the firm, which will be preparing a master plan for the park. It's really a very nice park. It's got, right now, it's got some dilapidated tennis courts and a nice little children's play area, but it's a beautiful, grassy, shaded park in the midst of several neighborhoods, and I'm hoping that over a period of several years, we can really turn it into something that the residents and citizens will be proud of. So this is the first step. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 09407 through 37412.
The council rules, although those resolutions would lay over for one week.
Call for public hearings, 41413, call for public hearing to rezoned property located at 5955 Airport Boulevard, 754 Lindland Avenue, and 755 Pine Light Drive from R1 and B2 to B1, and that's scheduled for August the 1st.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Announcements? I will start on my left with Mr. Manzi.
Yes, Madam President, I want to first apologize for my abrupt departure in last week's meeting. A young man that was killed that Tuesday on Dubois Avenue was a member of my congregation, and we funeralized him on Saturday. And so, again, apologize for that. We want to announce a change in the Africa Town 5K. It was due to be held two weeks ago. It'll be, it has been rescheduled to this coming Saturday, so we want to invite all the general public to come out and support this inaugural 5K. All proceeds will go right back into the community for community garden and other initiatives being planned by the Africa Town Community Development Corporation, headed up by many hard-working citizens in the Africa Town community. We're steadily seeing progress as relates to Ann Street. And I admit upfront that it's not the permanent fix, but it certainly is already much smoother to ride on. Even the sections of the street that have just simply been milled are more palatable to driving than what was there previously, so I'm proud of that, and along with all of the other resurfacing and sidewalk and community center park enhancements and improvements that we're seeing across District 2. That concludes my announcements, Madam President.
All right, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. I had previously announced a District 5 community meeting on the evening of August 1st, which was going to be held at St. Pius the 10th Catholic Church on Sage Avenue. I've since been advised that a mayoral candidate debate will be occurring that evening, and so as not to conflict with that, I will be moving the date of my District 5 meeting to a later date as yet to be determined. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to announce that on July 31st, Thursday, the 31st, we'll be holding my Midtown Community Meeting. It will be at the Ashland Place United Methodist Church, starting at 6 o'clock. As all the citizens in Midtown area should please meet us up there, we're going to talk about the CIP, the 2017 CIP projects. We're going to give you an update on where we are with those projects, and we're going to talk about the planned CIP project for 2018. I'm going to have someone to talk about, and an update on publics, and we're going to have an update on several drainage projects, including Grand Boulevard, Florida, and Dome. I hope to have the traffic engineer, someone from engineering to talk about, Engineering Department, to talk about Florida Street itself. As you know, it's going to have to be retrofitted for the new public, starting from Springfield Avenue, we're going to go all the way down to Dolphin Street, and we're going to connect that project with the Florida and Dome project and do that entire quarter. We have received a grant to put additional sidewalks on O'Shea Road. We should be starting in the next month on a grant we've already received in the past, so that will be two grants that we would have for sidewalks on O'Shea Road, and those sidewalks are going to come down to, almost down to publics and go back toward the interstate. And it's going to be something that is great and grand that we've been expecting in, for the Midtown community. So I want the people in Midtown to get ready, and we intend to have a tremendous meeting for them at the Ashland Place United Methodist Church. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. I'd like to again announce the Public Safety Committee meeting, which consists of myself as chair, and Councilman Williams and Manzi are also members. Of course, all members of the city council are urged to attend as well. This meeting will take place July 18th at 2 o'clock. There are two topics up for discussion, and that's the Citizens Police Advisory Council and the Body Cameras Policies and Procedures, and I ask that all members of the Advisory Council be invited to attend and to give us their information about their meetings and procedures of their committee, and also for the administration to send the proper personnel that can be present to answer questions and also to inform the council of issues regarding body cameras. Thank you.
And Mr. Richardson has one more announcement he needs to make about a meeting this afternoon?
Yes, I would like to announce, Madam President, that at 12:30, the Public Services Committee will be in session in the counter conference room. We're going to be talking about utility poles along our streets that is no longer in use by the Alabama Power Company, and they are now lighting our streetscape, and we want to see what, we're going to bring all parties together at our meeting to see if we can come up with a way to get rid of those expenditures, opposed, and hopefully we won't have to pass an order to do that. Hopefully, they can agree on what to do. What's happening is that other utilities companies have tied into the Alabama Power Company's power pole, and Alabama Power Company is no longer using many of those poles. So we've got a lot of other equipment tied to those poles that should be gone, and we're going to see if we can get all of that taken down by meeting with all parties today at 12:30.
All right, thank you. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Madam President. On last Thursday evening, we had our community district-wide meeting at the Fulton Road about the church located on DIP. Despite of the heavy rains, we had a packed house. I'd like to thank the administration, the police department, and the other departments of the city for coming out on last Thursday. Very well-attended meeting. We even had Bishop State Community College to be present to talk about job careers. Again, I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out on last Thursday evening, and also the administration and the different department that had came out, and also like to thank the Fulton Road about the church for hosting us on last Thursday. On last Thursday and Friday of last week, Representative Barbara Drummond and myself, we had a chat and chew with different seniors throughout the district. We knew they probably would not be able to come out to the district meeting, so we went out to update them at the DIP sales center on last Thursday, and on last Friday at the Barkin Towers off of Michigan Avenue and Hurtel Street. Very informative. The seniors were very appreciative for us coming out on last Thursday and Friday, and always good to keep seniors at heart. On Saturday, July 15th, the St. Andrew Episcopal Church will be having a free giveaway of beans and rice, inviting all the citizens off the DIP area to please come out on July 15th from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. to get free beans and rice, no question asked, just show up and they will pass it to you until it will run out. Again, that would be on July 15th, Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. until 11 o'clock a.m. at the St. Andrew Episcopal Church. Also, on Sunday, August 13th, we will be having our fifth annual Baptist school rally at the Pleasant Valley Shopping Center located on Government Boulevard. Any volunteers, sponsors, I ask you to please contact me at 208-7441 or CJ dot small at cityofmobile.org. Last year was a great success. We had plenty of food, games, entertainment, and Baptist school supplies, with over 500 kids showed up on last year, expecting the same this year. Again, that would be held on Sunday, August 13th, 2017, at 3:00 p.m. at the Pleasant Valley Shopping Center. And remember that District 3 is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm actually very fond of the slogan that my colleague has adopted of District 3 is the place where things are happening, and certainly they are throughout our city. But this past 4th of July, I think I have been in the running for the place where the most was happening. First of all, Sky Ranch Neighborhood, I think one of the biggest supporters of our police and public safety anywhere, certainly in my district, took the time to get all the children out of the backyards and away from their PlayStations or whatever they decided to use as entertainment, and got them on their bicycles and wagons and strollers and running, and they had a 4th of July parade, maybe the only one in the city. Teaching young people the importance of this holiday, as we call it, and I think no one could describe it better than my colleague, Mr. Davis, did at our last meeting, so I want to tempt. But it is something that we must, as a people, continue to celebrate and observe regardless of where we are or how tough the times are, or what pressure we have from political correctness efforts. Bay Bear Stadium, completely full of citizens who came to see the great American pastime, and also celebrate the 4th of July with families and friends, a full house. I say so, it was a full house, about 40 short of capacity of 6,000 seats filled. What a great day at Bay Bear Stadium. You know, there were some, I've received several calls or emails that questioned whether or not the city should celebrate the 4th of July, whether or not they should expend tax dollars to celebrate our nation's independence. I simply said, "I can't believe we're getting this phone call." I simply cannot understand, having served 20 years in the military and know so many people that are right now serving around our world, around this globe, to protect our freedoms, that we would even question why or if we should celebrate the 4th of July. Madam President, we normally don't do this, but I was kind of expecting during our meeting this morning that somebody would introduce a young scout in our audience. We often recognize important people that are in our, in our audience, and if it would be okay with his family and if he would be willing, I'd certainly like to know who he is and where he's from, and if he would introduce himself, that would be awesome.
Yes, well, Mr. Williams beat me to the punch. Why don't you come on down to the podium? We saw you sitting there. What's your name?
My name's Peter Toller.
Hey, Peter.
And I live in Mobile with my, I'm here for a citizenship and my community merit badge.
So you have to come and observe a government entity?
A council meeting.
A council meeting, okay.
Welcome.
Yes, we're happy to have you here. Who is with you?
My grandmother.
His grandmother. Well, nice to have you here. Thank you for coming. We appreciate you being here with us.
Awesome. And one other thing, oh, well, two other things. First of all, there were some people that two weeks ago, their calendars would not allow them to participate in the first Africa Town Bridge Run, and I'm just trusting that maybe some of their calendars have now freed up, and they might join me as we make our way across and back the Africa Town Bridge this weekend. You can still sign up online, get a t-shirt or not get a t-shirt, if you want to save a little money, you can go without the t-shirt, but I will be there, my son will be there, and my wife is going to be there, and we're all going to cross the bridge and come back, and I'm going to do my best to outrun my wife. I will not outrun my son. So I ask everybody, please make time this weekend to come out and go to Mr. Manzi's district. And enjoy this first annual run. Lastly, I don't normally brag here, but I'll just say that a lot of people may have seen my Facebook post here a couple days ago when the ACT scores were released for the testing center at South Alabama. My son, John Paul, a 34. Folks, that's, let's say, it's 20 points higher than his dad ever got, so you know where he got it from. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. All right, just a few announcements from District 7. We still have Market in the Park through the end of July. Market in the Park at Loretta Park ends on the 27th. Go on out from 3 until 6. They have fresh fruit, vegetables, and arts and crafts and other things, and of course, at Loretta Park, it's a wonderful location, so get on out there from 3 until 6 through the end of July on Thursdays, and it ends July 27th. The pay-go, we talked about some pay-as-you-go work coming up in Districts 1 and 3. District 2's, that's Connie Hudson, our commissioner. That pay-as-you-go work is getting ready to start imminently, so you will see some resurfacing work getting started again, thanks to our friends over at the county commission. This is Commissioner Hudson's district, which includes a number of us here on the council. Also, Schillinger Road drainage work is being done. You will be seeing some alerts going out very shortly because drainage work will be underway, which will require us to close a lane of traffic, and that will have to go on for some time until we can get that drainage work done, but you will see some notices from the city and from the council letting you know about the lane closure on Schillinger Road. You know about the Public Services Committee meeting, which is following the council meeting at 12:30. Our Finance Committee meeting today is at 2 o'clock, and of course, Mrs. Rich mentioned the Public Safety Committee meeting coming up July 18th. Any other announcements? All right, with that then, we are adjourned.